In the following ways, notice published in the Courier News, notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, notice made available to the township clerk, notice sent to the Courier News, well, no longer the Star Ledger, I guess. Uh, will the clerk, please call the roll?
Mayor Waller?
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cahill?
Here.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yeah, here.
Okay. Mr. Echeverria? He just emailed me, his Zoom was updating. Here he comes.
Okay.
No, I'm here. Thank you.
He's here. Thank you, Hi-Fil. And Madam Chair?
Here. Uh, Mr. Barlow, would you please read the open public meeting notice?
Certainly, Madam Chair. In keeping with the Department of Community Affairs guidelines, the planning board is going forward in this virtual platform. The appropriate login information was set forth in the notices that were sent out. If any member of the public wishes to be heard during a particular application, please raise your hand and the chair will recognize you. And it's appropriate to go forward at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the American flag is visible over my right shoulder. Can we all cross our hearts and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, can we have the swearing in of the professionals?
Can you please raise your right hand?
Have.
Do you swear that, do you swear that the testimony about the give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any changes to tonight's agenda, Mr. Barlow? Mr. Barlow, I think your mic is off.
You are correct. Uh, no changes, Madam Chair, other than a reminder that with regards to number 10, the Rivercrest matter, I have a conflict. And Mr. Caneely is here to handle that matter.
Okay, then the rest of our agenda stands. Um, can I have a motion to pay the duly, uh, audited bills?
Madam Chair, this is Carol Saunders. I make a motion to pay the duly audited bills.
Do I have a second?
Second, Councilwoman Cahill.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Echevaria?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number eight, adoption of resolutions to memorialize action taken for January eighth.
Madam Chair, I'd like to memorialize the resolution for application twenty-four PB twenty, Ribbon Hill Metals Urban Renewal LLC, Calamneary and Final Site Plan.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Atkins, second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Echevaria?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Ms. Saunders, item number eight, adoption of minutes.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of January eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, do I have a second?
On your second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Echevaria?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Item number ten, discussion regarding the redevelopment plan for blocks seventy-three oh five, lots nineteen point oh one, twenty and twenty-one.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Jim Caneely, uh, sitting in for Mr. Barlow. Uh, this is a redevelopment plan discussion for the Rivercrest Cabana Club. I believe we have Mr. Clark in present, uh, to lead the discussion.
Yes, thank you very much, Jim. Everyone see that? And can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, then let's get rolling. So yeah, as Jim said, I'll be presenting the Rivercrest Cabana Club redevelopment plan. Uh, if you recall back in December last year, I presented the study. So that paved the way for us to, uh, or for me to prepare this plan on the board's behalf, and I will run through it. Um, so just a quick plan overview. So this proposes age-restricted residential townhomes as permitted, as really the only permitted use within the designated area of this redevelopment. Um, so this proposed use, use fits in, uh, I believe with your current R-ten residential zone, which is where, uh, Rivercrest, uh, resides, at least in within that zone. Um, and I think that the density will match the low-density residential character of that zone. So I'll run through this plan. It's really just gonna go through the physical and structural nature, different standards that I put together. Um, I won't read this. I think most of you are familiar with the Rivercrest Cabana Club at the end of Rivercrest Drive. Um, the total lot area is two point one four acres. And just as a quick reminder, your R-ten zone, uh, only allows single-family detached dwellings. Um, it allows some accessory uses like pools or private garages, um, some conditional uses, and then these are the current standards. Um, actually, I just noticed a typo. I'll fix that, uh, for your R-ten residential zone. So I'm just gonna run through the plan goals and objectives really fast. So we want to create land use requirements specific to the redevelopment area so that we can effectuate, um, that development of underutilized parcels that was found from the study that I presented back in December, uh, in such a way that really improves the area and benefits from such a redevelopment plan. Um, so we want to encourage redevelopment for tax ratables, but also, uh, construct appropriate land uses within the zone in Piscataway. Um, and we can leverage different financial tools such as tax abatement through the redevelopment process. Um, but really, uh, the reason why we're going with modern age-restricted residential units is because, uh, of the high demand for such a use. Um, but the added benefit is, is that we can set aside three units as affordable so that we can, um, help the township with its compliance for the fair share application, uh, for your affordable housing master plan. Um, so now I'll run through the land use plan if there's no questions. Um, as I said, only principal permitted use allowed is residential townhomes restricted to age fifty-five and over. Uh, I put in permitted accessory uses that are pretty typical. Your off-street parking, signs, gates, patios, electric charging stations for parking. Um, and then your prohibited uses are basically anything that's not written in here or storage or warehousing of hazardous or dangerous materials. So bottom of page four, you'll see the proposed area yard and bulk requirements. So we're going with minimum lot area of ninety thousand square feet. Your minimum lot width and depth of two fifty and two hundred. Um, so that fits in well with the two, roughly two-acre size parcel that we're talking about. Um, and I, the minimum rear and side yards are pretty typical, um, for townhomes, but also fit well within the context of the R-ten zone. Uh, they're pretty similar. Uh, they can't be any higher than thirty-five feet, these townhomes, so no more than two and a half or three stories. Um, and then your max impervious coverage and max building coverage are pretty typical as well. Um, in terms of density, so since it's only two units, um, we're proposing a total of sixteen units in four residential townhome structures. So basically you would have four units per building for a total of sixteen, and as I said, three of those will be affordable units. I'm gonna skip ahead on the plan. The, the section is really just that you're, the relationship of this plan to your existing development regulations. Um, and your relationship to local objectives is making sure that the density is appropriate, so is the land use, traffic, et cetera. Um, in terms of traffic circulation, there's really not much. There's, uh, a proposed one parking lot in and out. Um, we're proposing two spaces per residential unit so that roughly works out to twenty-eight spaces, six of which will be plug-in electric charging stations, stations, and will be fully operational when it is built as a requirement of this plan. And then you'll also have five-foot wide pedestrian sidewalks, not only along Rivercrest Drive, but throughout the complex to connect the four structures, um, so that residents can get into their units, uh, easily from the parking area. And just a few more sections that I think are worth going over. Utilities are pretty straightforward. Uh, solid waste disposal, there will be an enclosure with a dumpster. Um, and you know, this just lays out that no, uh, hazardous waste or anything like that, no bulk storage is allowed. Signage, design standards are pretty straightforward. We're allowing one freestanding monument sign just for the overall, uh, development. Um, can't be any higher than five feet, no more than fifty square feet in size, and it has to be set back ten feet. Then you have your typical directional signs that you find in parking lots. Um, nothing, or they may be illuminated as long as they're not flashing or anything like that. Um, lighting shall be LED and shall not spill over to neighboring, uh, residents. Landscaping, we usually keep pretty, um, basic in landscape plans because we're, or, excuse me, redevelopment plans as we, we trust in Piscataway Township staff to make it landscaped, um, as desired. And I think that's really it. The additional design standards really just make sure fences are no more than six feet and they're not chain link, um, and that they meet your property maintenance code. Um, yeah, environmental assessment, there was no environmental concerns during the study, so it does not seem that the redeveloper will have to do anything, but if something does come up, this just says that they are responsible for that. And I really think that's it. So, quick summation, this is a redevelopment plan for Rivercrest, or, um, the Rivercrest Cabana Club, total of sixteen age-restricted townhomes in four structures with three affordable units. And that is the plan that we are proposing for this lot. So with that, I can take questions.
Uh, members of the board, do you have any questions of Mr. Clarkin?
Uh, Madam Chair, it's, uh, Councilwoman Cahill. Um, yeah, Mr. Clarkin, just a quick question. Um, and I'm sure you said it, but I wasn't clear on it. The age-restricted units are only the townhomes or the entire development?
The entire development.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let me jump in and apologize. I had it in my calendar at seven thirty. I don't know what the mistake was. Larry Lavender, I apologize. I thought it was, uh, set for seven thirty tonight.
You didn't go yet, Mr. Lavender. Thank you.
Oh, we didn't go yet?
Nope. You're on next, so good timing.
Uh, any other questions?
If I may, Madam Chair, I, this one's for, um, Mr. Caneely. Um, I just wanna make sure, you know, the age restricted, because I know in, uh, at the senior housing, we have problems with people qualify for this senior housing, and the next thing you know, you have extended family members living there. And it turns into, you have to go to court to get them out. Um, do we address this now or in the site plan? I just wanna make sure, age restricted means age restricted, that somebody buys the units, age restricted, and they don't take off. And then next thing you know, you have somebody who had not age restricted there, living in a unit where the, the principal owner's not there anymore. Even though they own the unit.
That's a valid consideration, but it's not a valid consideration for this discussion. That would come up later at site plan.
All right, I wanna make a note to the planning staff that when we go to do, when the, do the site plan, that has to be a condition of approval, and I want, uh, the attorneys to work on it so we don't have an issue that we're having around town right now.
Okay. Um, any other questions for Mr. Caneely? Or Mr. Clarkin, I should say. Okay, um, let's open it up to the public for any questions. Uh, members of the public, you've heard, uh, redevelopment plan for age-restricted housing by Mr. Clarkin. Uh, does anyone in the public have any questions for the testimony, uh, for Mr. Clarkin's testimony regarding this matter?
No, I'm Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public.
Uh, Madam Chair, in anticipation of a positive, uh, reaction to this discussion, I have prepared a resolution, uh, recommending the adoption of this redevelopment plan for the consideration of the planning board.
Well, um, do we have to vote on it first?
They do it different here, Jim. They do two votes.
Oh, okay.
Just the one.
Okay. Okay, uh, members of the board, does anyone have a motion at this time regarding, uh, how to proceed with this motion for redevelopment?
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill. I would recommend that we move forward with the recommendation of the, um, age-restricted housing as laid out by Mr. Clarkin in the redevelopment plan.
Uh, do I have a second?
Uh, Don Corcoran, I'll second.
Uh, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Echevaria?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right, now that the board is reacting favorably, I do have a resolution.
Madam Chair, I'd like to memorialize the resolution for recommending adoption of the redevelopment plan for Rivercrest Cabana Club, Rivercrest Drive, block seventy-three oh five, lot nineteen point one, twenty and twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Don Corcoran, I'll second.
Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Echevaria?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, and, uh, I will return the meeting to Mr. Barlow.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow night.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Thank you, Jim.
Item number eleven on our agenda tonight. Uh, twenty-four PB zero eight slash zero nine V is in Victor LRN Properties LLC. Okay, here we go.
Before Mr. Lavender begins, Madam Chair, I just wanna indicate for the record, this is a continuation of a matter that was heard on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four. At that time, Chairwoman Smith, Mayor Waller, Councilwoman Cahill, Ms. Corcoran, Mr. Ahmed, um, who are on the meeting tonight, were present during that hearing. Mr. Foster and Mr. Kenny, who were there in December, are not present tonight. So those five members heard the testimony. Also, Mr. Atkins, uh, has reviewed the transcript and signed an affidavit indicating, um, that he did so. So we have six members, um, this evening that, um, if the matter comes to a vote, can vote. Uh, Ms. Saunders, uh, was not present unfortunately at the December meeting, and Mr. Echevaria was not present. So I just want the record to reflect, those are the six members who, um,
Will be able to vote, okay.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lavender. I turn it over to you.
Sure. Mr. Barlow, did, did the, uh, so there's six members who are able to vote? Are there, did the members, I mean, uh, any of the other six, did they listen to the transcript? Are they able to vote because, uh, they heard the transcript or no?
They were, well, five weren't there at the meeting.
Five were present.
And then the last one, the sixth one, with the transcript.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. I just, there's two members that are unable to vote. Uh, we have eight members on, so six can vote. That's all. I wanted the record to be clear.
Yeah, thank you. And are my professionals on? I'm just looking through. Yep, Les is here. Gotcha, okay. All right. Um, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Larry Lavender. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Uh, the property at issue is located at sixty Normandy Drive, Piscataway, New Jersey. Applicant is requesting approval from the planning board to subdivide an existing fifteen thousand four hundred and eight square foot parcel into two lots. Uh, there's presently a single-family dwelling on the property. Applicant is proposing to construct a new single-family dwelling on the newly subdivided portion with frontage on Hancock Road. The existing single-family house will be renovated, the two-story addition and a rear patio. Will be testimony given by the applicant's engineer and planner, uh, to address questions and comments from the board's professionals, as well as those from the board and the community, uh, with the board's permission. If there are no questions for myself, I'd like to have our first witness sworn in. I believe our first witness will be Les.
Mr. Walker, can you please raise your right hand? Do you, do you swear that the testimony about the give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Of course I do.
Thank you.
So, so a, at the last hearing, uh, I believe, um, I got my full testimony in. Um, there are a handful of changes. Uh, we, we resubmitted, um, a couple of weeks ago, and there are a, a couple of changes. Um, we heard the concern over the lot coverage and, um, the, the house, the proposed house on Lot B, um, that the additions to the existing house being, um, a little bit excessive. Um, so where the architect, uh, worked with the, the owner and, um, got the building down to a nineteen point nine percent coverage, so we comply now, uh, with building coverage. We're twenty percent allowed, we're at nineteen point nine. And what that did was, um, by compacting the footprint, it'll also eliminated a need for a side variance. Um, on the garage side, we had five point seven feet before, and now we're fully compliant. Um, and in the front, um, the, the existing house sits nine point seven feet, um, back, um, into the property from the right-of-way. Um, and that's, um, we were proposing previously six point seven feet for a porch. And we have, um, since reworked the architectural plans and, um, we are holding the nine point seven feet, uh, where the existing home currently sits. So, so no longer need, it, it's still a variance, but it's, it's not, um, we're, we're not exacerbating the, the, uh, variance. We're kind of holding the existing, um, house setback. Um, so, so that's, that's the highlights. Um, I have, uh, the updated reports from, um, the board professionals. Um, and, and you know, with, with the exception of a couple of items, I, I think we can, we'll, we'll be fully, fully complying with those letters. Um, and, uh, so if there's any questions or if you want me to go through the letters, um, however you want to proceed, Madam Chair.
I guess, Mr. Wa, Walker, wh-what don't you think you can comply with? Obviously, the plan is, you've reduced some of the variances that were needed in keeping with the comments from the board members. Uh, wh-what is it that, um, you, you don't feel you can comply with?
No, so, so, um, we had a, um, there were, there were a few items pointed out in Ms. Corcoran's letter. Um, she, uh, identified that we did not show, um, the fiber, twin-fiber optic conduit on Hancock. Um, that was a drafting error, uh, it was a misunderstanding, and those will be provided, they'll be added to the plan. Um, there was a discussion about, um, uh, one of the comments was about, um, needing a right-of-way dedication at the inner intersection of Hancock and Normandy, um, where the property, um, boundary currently goes out into what will be the, the, uh, improved intersection. Um, there, there's a, a, uh, plan, uh, by Remington Vernic that, for, for improvements and, and where that, that curb, the curb between the two roads, um, meets, um, our property goes out into that road. And we will make that adjustment. Um, it changes the lot area for, um, Lot A from, uh, ninety, uh, nine thousand five hundred and ninety-six feet. That would be a hundred and forty-eight foot, square foot, um, uh, dedication, right-of-way dedication. So it reduces Lot A to nine thousand four hundred and forty-eight square feet. Um, and, uh, and then there was a question whether or not giving that dedication would cause a, uh, lot coverage for, um, lot co, coverage violation for Lot A. And it just changes from fifteen point four, of the way it was shown on the plan, to fifteen point six, still, um, considerably below twenty percent, which is allowed. So it doesn't, it doesn't cause a problem there. Um, and we will make that, that right-of-way dedication.
Mr. Walker, can I just, for, to have those numbers again? I realize it's at nine, five, nine, six. That dedication that was requested by Ms. Corcoran and the staff, uh, is how many square feet?
One hundred and forty-eight square feet. It's a small triangle where the, where the property goes out into the road, the right, the, the roadway. Um, so that, that the net number will be nine thousand four hundred and forty-eight square feet on Lot A.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a, it's a minor change. It doesn't, and it doesn't impact anything else.
Okay, but the applicant is willing to do that dedication as per the request?
That's correct. Uh, there was a couple other places where, um, our, our plan had, uh, slightly different numbers than, um, than, um, Ms. Corcoran's letter, and we'll, we'll co, fully comply and update our plan to, uh, to match the, her numbers. And, other than that, uh, there was a, there was a question about the location of the air conditioning units and screening. Um, the, on Lot A, the condenser is shown in the side yard. Um, there's, there's really, it's two front yards and an inside yard. It's a triangular-shaped lot with no rear yard. Um, so obviously it can't be behind the home, um, but it'll be on the side. Um, it, it complies with setback, and we will provide the required screening um, in the form of a short, um, screening fence and some, some evergreen, um, shrubs. And then on the, the addition for the new home, uh, we showed it behind the home, but that puts it closer than ten feet to the rear property line. So to fix that, um, same thing, we'll move that to the side yard, um, alongside the garage. And, um, and provide the same screening, and then it won't require, um, any, any, uh, uh, relief for screening, uh, or location.
Okay, and you agree to work with the bar, the professional staff as to the landscaping, correct?
That's right. That's right.
And, and Mr. Lavender, I, I think you probably saw in this, in the staff report, the requested deed restrictions.
Yeah.
The applicant has no issue with regards to complying with that?
No, sir.
That was, I forgot to mention that. So, so that on both homes, and, and our architect is on, on both homes, the, the second, um, the second kind of main, um, entrance, uh, was eliminated. Um, it was the, it's the, uh, the existing front door on, uh, Lot B on the existing home is, is, um, is now eliminated. And then it was a, a, a external egress, um, with, with stairs, not, not a Bilco, uh, a door, but, but like a, a full set of stairs um, to the, to the home on Lot A, and that's also been eliminated. So, so in hearing the, the concerns over, you know, illegal two families that kind of just pop up, um, those, those, um, external doors had also been.
Ms. Corcoran, do you have any other concerns you would want to address?
I do not, Tom. I think they have addressed everything in the staff report, and, um, no further comments on our end.
Larry, you have anything else?
I believe we have one other professional, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, do we have, um, our planner?
Well, do you need the, do you need to see the architectural plans, the updated architectural plans? He's, he's here. Reggie's here, if you need to, to see the homes, um, if not yet. Justin, the, uh, planner is also one.
Madam Chair, I wouldn't mind seeing the plans if they're gonna be.
Okay, then let's call, um, witness. Give everybody a chance to see what we're, what they're talking about. Mr. Lavender? You want to call the architect?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like our architect to come up and be sworn in, please.
Hi, I'm Reggie Pujey. I am the architect.
Uh, can you please raise your right hand first?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Pujey, um, do you swear that to somebody about to give, we do truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
So what I can walk you through, which are the plans that have been sent to the, to the township for review and for record. Um, I can bring up, uh, first. This, I'll try and stay in the same order that Les did, um, with the, uh, Lot B. As first, if I can share my screen.
Sure.
I would like to do that. So just to, to give you some orientation of where the location of it is, again, Lot, Lot B is here, which is in this circle. We submitted two set of documents to kind of delineate the, and, and not confuse the two lots, so. The first lot we're discussing, which is where the existing dwelling is, is where the addition, addition has been, been made. Um, I will just quickly walk you through what the existing dwelling, um, look like for now, it is.
Mr. Pujey, if you want to maybe go to the, the changes you made from the last plans. You, you did testify and went over the, the old plans and the existing conditions. You just want to highlight for the board that the changes you made from last time.
Sure, sure. So, the changes, the difference from. The last time, the last time we had an entrance at the, the ground level just for the, um. Uh, uh, with a bedroom and ha- had us kind of a, its own pri- own suite, um, with the bath. Boyer, and then there was, this was the kitchen and then the living and dining room. So now that the, based on all the comments that we received, we removed this utility room. Um, since then, we have made all this the same level, which is the first floor. Um, and I will show you here, which is now it's, you enter in from this side of the, of the dwelling. And this all is all on one level, you have the living room, dining room, a powder room, and then the eat-in kitchen. Uh, one car garage, uh, whereas before we had, um, the. Dwelling and then we had a, we had a, a, a two-car garage on the side as well. Um, and we also had a, a basement under the addition portion, uh, which. I guess we would consider as a cellar now, we still remain with somewhat of a cellar. Um, utility room and rec room on the ground. Then on the upper floor. Very much so. We have changed, we have the primary suite here, walk-in closet, um, primary bath. Initially, the whole primary suite consumed basically the whole second floor of this, and then there, we had other rooms on the. Um. A- actually, I think I'm referencing. An older plan, but very similar, this was, we made this a, a study, uh, it's not a bedroom, but. Anyway, this was the ol- older plan and then. So now we have, um, more of an office. Two bedrooms, it's a small office, two bedrooms, and then the primary suite is, is over the garage. And then, um, with the, its own bathroom, and then there's bathroom, um, for the main, here in the laundry room. And then, uh, that's, and then we had the, the loft space with a powder room. You know, loft, attic storage, powder, mechanical closet. Those are the primary changes that we made for the, um. For B. Any questions related to B?
Members of the board, do you have any questions of the testimony so far? You need any clarifications?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanted, just, I don't, I apologize, I don't have the architecturals in, in front of me and they're very small on the screen. But the proposed garage, that, that does comply with the size requirement in terms that it has to be twelve feet by, um, twenty feet with no obstructions, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Any other clear, members above the board need clarification? Okay, just send your testimon- testimony, um, Mr. Lavender?
Uh, it's not my testimony, I'm the attorney.
I don't, I don't mean your testimony, your, your witness's testimony.
If there's no further questions from the, either the audience or the board, yeah, we can bring on our, I believe, our final.
Because I believe before we post it to the, uh, uh, to the public, we should get the, the next witness.
My man, absolutely. Believe, is, uh, I believe Justin is our planner tonight?
Can you unshare your screen, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Can call your next witness.
Mr. Justin, I believe is our planner for tonight.
I'm here, good evening.
Hello, Justin, and they swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister Lavender, Justin did not testify at the last hearing, so if you could just qualify him, the other two witnesses. Were qualified, but Mr. Osiello wasn't.
Sure, Justin, you want to give a background of your qualifications, your resume?
Yes, absolutely, and, uh, I, I thank you and, uh, a good evening to everybody. Um, I have a master's degree in, in city regional planning from Rutgers University, uh, I've been a licensed. Professional planner in the state of New Jersey since two thousand eight. Uh, I have approximately twenty years of experience in this profession, uh, I've appeared in front of your board on multiple occasions, but. Um, I've appeared in, uh, twenty counties in the state of New Jersey on hundreds of occasions on different matters. I've done everything from master planning to redevelopment, I've done a lot of, uh, you know, zoning ordinance work. On residential properties, commercial, et cetera, and I'm very familiar, uh, with, uh, this type of testimony as well.
You're acceptable, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, I guess we can just get right into it, uh, I did, of course, have the opportunity, I've been on, I think this is the second hearing. I've been working on this project now for, I think, approximately two years, so, um, uh, you know, quite familiar. Um, with the, the genesis of this work and. And obviously the ch- changes, um, or the, the changes to the plans that have occurred. Um, since, uh, the hearing in December, uh, but. One thing that remained, um, is that we're dealing with, uh, one lot and, you know, as proposed, uh, you know, two lots. If the subdivision, uh, is approved. That are, uh, irregularly shaped, I mean, these are some of the oddest shaped lots that, that I've encountered. Um, in my twenty years, uh, of, of plenty experience. Um, so I think, um, you know, from a planning standpoint, uh, these variances a- a- and I'll, you know, go through them one by one. But I'll be very brief, um. These variances can, can be processed under the C-one and C-two criteria, the C-one criteria, uh, being a hardship. That's relating to the nature of the shape of the property, uh, and the C-two criteria, which is the, uh, the. You know, public benefit test, um, you know, what are the benefits of here to the community? Um, so I'll just get, you know, right into it. Um, as I just said, you know, under the C-one criteria, um, these are oddly, uh, this is one oddly shaped lot, it's essentially. Um, if the subdivision is approved, it, it's two double triangles, essentially. Um, this is the only lot that's in the area that's shaped this way and. Which is also very. Different about this lot and unique is that, um, this overall lot has frontage on three roadways. Two roadways, uh, you know, predominantly, so there are some, uh, um, you know, there's some qualities. The, of, of this overall lot that are, that are inherent here that are really driving these hardships. Um, I'm going to reference, just for, for ease of going through things, I'm going to reference the, uh, the, the staff letter dated June. Twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, last revised, uh, two, three, twenty twenty-five. Um. Does a nice job of, of brevity and, um, you know, really going through the, um, the variances, uh, you know, that are required. Um, for, um, proposed Lot A. There's a variance for, uh, for minimum lot area, ten thousand square feet is required, proposed lot area is nine thousand four hundred. That is just changed, obviously, as you heard. About the, uh, proposed, the case, a slight decrease. Um, even though this lot does not comply with this own requirement of the lot area. Uh, my argument here is consistent with the character of the properties across from Normandy Drive. Um, fifty-five Normandy Drive is, uh, nine thousand five hundred square feet. Fifty-nine Normandy Drive is, is nine thousand five hundred square feet, so. We're, we're right in the, um, you know, the ballpark, so really. You know, that goes to establishing, um, the consistency with the immediate character of the area. Um, also, it's consistent with the property that's adjacent on, uh, Hancock, uh, Seven Hancock. Road is, uh, six thousand square feet, so obviously we see the size of that lot, approx thirty-five hundred square feet, so all in.
Offspring's getting bad.
Be freezing out. Is, uh, is one hundred foot lot depth, proposed is, uh, fifty-five point eight nine feet, lot depth. Again, this is an oddly shaped lot, it's triangular in nature. Um, the, the, um, you know, the character of this lot is, you know, no fault to the owner, whatever you're going to put on this lot. Uh, whether it's this or something else, you're going to need a variance because of this condition, there's really no way to cure, uh. This condition. Uh, in terms of the front yard setback, uh, thirty-five feet is required. As proposed is, uh, twenty-five feet on Hancock Road. And forty-four, four, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-four point four or five feet on, uh, Normandy Drive. Again, um, we're dealing with, uh, two front yard setbacks here, that goes to the C-one hardship. Uh, due to that and also the triangular shape of the lot, um, conformance is very difficult here for any type of. Um, dwelling that i- is going to be reasonable, um, in size, uh, you know, to accommodate a single-family unit. Um, and I believe the next variance that relates to the, uh, the, the conduit lines, um, has been addressed, uh, by Mr. Walker. Uh, in terms of proposed Lot B, um, the minimum lot, uh, that's, that's required is ten thousand square feet. Uh, proposed is, uh, is five thousand eight hundred twelve square feet. Um, you know, what's interesting about Lot A and Lot B is that both of them, because they're kind of existing. Both lots, you know, from the naked eye, kind of exist on separate eyes, because the point at which they combine is, you know, very narrow. So, if you're standing on the street and you're looking at both Lot A and Lot B, or proposed Lot A and Lot B, they're going to appear. Um, you know, to be separate lots, and that goes to the unique nature of this overall lot. But I would say what's important here, uh, you know, even though the proposed lot area of Lot B is approximately, uh, four thousand square feet. Under, um, you know, what's required as a minimum in the zone. Um, this lot area is predominantly consistent with the neighboring property at, uh, two, two Bristol Road. Um, that lot area is five thousand nine hundred sixty-seven square feet compared to the proposed lot area of, uh, five thousand eight hundred twelve. Square feet, so when you look at, you know, the impacts on the adjacent properties here, uh, the, the property that, that is actually contiguous. Um, with this property, it's not creating a condition of, uh, one small lot or one undersized lot. Next to a much larger lot, they're pretty consistent in terms of size. Um, the next is the, the lot width. Uh, one hundred foot lot width is required and, uh, eighty-three point five lot width is proposed. Again, um, you know, we're dealing with a lot that for all intents and purposes. Um, even though there's, it's one overall lot today, um, they still kind of appear to be separate lots. Uh, and again, this is not, in my opinion, uh, this is really not discernible to the eye. Uh, and it's really not going to compare, uh, to be, uh, you know, out of character, um, you know, with the area. Or, you know, with the requirement of a hundred foot, um, lot width. The next variance required is lot depth, uh, like lot depth, it's, uh, one hundred feet and seventy-six point five is proposed. Again, same argument here, we're dealing with it, with this oddly shaped lot that's, uh, triangular in nature. Uh, and there's really no way to cure this condition. Um, the next is the front yard setback, uh, thirty-five feet is required and nine point seven feet, which is to the covered porch is proposed. Um, this front yard setback is actually, uh, consistent with the, uh, with the current condition of the lot. Um, the proposed improvements do not exceed the existing and proposed front yard, which I would say from a planning standpoint. And from an impact standpoint, is, is quite, uh, you know, pertinent here. Um, and, and also, um, for the, for the, uh, rear yard setback, which is twenty-five. Uh, feet required, uh, proposed is, uh, one point two, what's, what's unique about this variance is that. Um, there were two encroachments actually onto the adjacent property. Um, for the principal rear ra- uh, rear yard and the, the accessory side and rear yards, both of them are being cured, even though a variance is still required. I think from a planning standpoint, uh, again, this is a pretty, uh, unique condition where we have a portion. Um, of the structures on this property encroaching onto an adjacent property, so I think. Um, you know, through this plan, uh, you know, curing that, that deficiency or that impact. Uh, to the adjacent property is, i- i- is really proper planning. Um, and, and lastly, there's a variance for, uh, for the lot frontage, uh, as required, it's a hu- it's, uh, it's one hundred feet. And as proposed is, uh, is, uh, six, six point four of a foot to Bristol Road. I really see this more as a technical variance, uh, it is a tiny bit of frontage on, on Bristol Road. And really in terms of this pro- this proposed subdivision, um, there's really no impact at all to Bristol Road, because. This house is, uh, you know, the, uh, uh, the orientation of the house and the driveway, uh, and really pretty much everything that's proposed to be developed. On this property is, is pushed towards, um, a Normandy Drive. Um, and lastly, I believe, uh, the, uh, the AC unit issue, um, has been cured, as you heard from, from Mr. Walker. Um, so that's the overall kind of gist of the, the technical justifications for the variances. I would say under the, the C-two criteria, um, I would say there are at least two purposes of the municipal land use law. Uh, that would be advanced, uh, through this application, and that's, uh, purpose G. Uh, to provide for, uh, a sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, in this instance, uh, it's residential. Um, I think, as I said, um, a lot of these variances are, are driven by C-one conditions, uh, this is a proposed use. Uh, the, the, the house that's currently existing on the property today is permitted, and if the subdivision is successful. Um, the other house, uh, will be permitted as well. Um, and it's my, uh, you know, professional opinion, and I would say that that opinion is supported and, you know, buttressed. Um, you know, by the opinion of the site engineer, I would say that there, there is sufficient space to accommodate the subdivision. And also, uh, purpose I, which speaks to a, uh, desire revisional environment and good civic design. Um, as you heard from, you know, from the architect, um, you know, what's proposed is going to be a vast improvement. Over, um, what's currently on the site, uh, today, um, and there's going to be a lot more functionality on the site than, uh. Then, then it's currently situated as well, so all in all, from the C-two standpoint, I believe what's proposed is a better planning alternative. Um, than, than what, you know, currently sits on the site, um, you know, despite, of course, the, the variances, um. That are required this evening, also, I think it's important as well, and this is referenced in, uh, in the, the board planner's letter. Uh, the, uh, through lot condition, uh, is, is cured, uh, in this application as well. Again, you know, we're dealing with a very oddly shaped lot, uh, which for all intents and purposes appears to be two separate lots. Um, that has frontage on three roadways, two, you know, two roadways predominantly, a sliver of, of Bristol. Uh, but we always look to, uh, to, uh, to eliminate, um, you know, through lot conditions. And I think this is an application, um, that serves that goal. Relative to the, the master plan, and I believe the latest update was, was. Relative to the, the master plan, and I believe the latest update was, was 2020. Um, there are some purposes that I think are pertinent. Um, it does speak to, uh, high quality design and residential and other uses, I think this, this meets that goal. Uh, preservation of the character and the quality of, of, uh, of neighborhoods. Um, again, I think, um, the, um, the the adaptive reuse of the existing structure on, on this property and the new structure as well certainly goes to the preservation of, you know, providing for two modern dwellings, um, in this neighborhood. Um, and possibly this can be a, you know, shot in the arm, which I think is always important from a planning standpoint. Also, which is, which is also very pertinent, as you heard at the, the, you know, last hearing, um, you know, the applicant's father is, uh, you know, elderly and infirm, and, um, there is a purpose of, um, or a, a goal of, of the 2020, uh, update, um, which speaks to providing a, a variety of, of seniors, senior citizen, uh, housing alternatives. Uh, and I think this, this proposal really, really goes to the heart of meeting that goal. Um, so that's all the positive criteria. I'll just very briefly touch on the negative criteria, and as the board is aware, uh, there are two prompts and negative criteria, the first is a showing of whether or not the variances that are, that are presented will propose, uh, will, will present a substantial detriment to the public good. And the second is a showing of whether or not the variances will impair the purpose of the zone plan, the master plan, the zoning ordinance. Uh, in terms of the, uh, you know, the first prompt, I, I think it's important as well to also stress that the law states that there just can't be any detriment, because two reasonably, two reasonable people can disagree whether something's a detriment. Uh, that's why it's kind of a higher level of being, uh, substantial. I think in this, I think in this proposal, um, the, you know, proposed uses on these two separate lots are permitted, and they're also obviously compatible with the single, single family character of the area. One thing, especially when I'm on the public side, doing, you know, plan reviews, I always look at um, lot coverage or, or building coverage in this instance, um, you know, per your, per your zone. And this is an application, uh, that doesn't require a variance, uh, for building coverage, and that really speaks to, I know, um, we've all been experiencing seemingly, you know, you know, 100-year storms on a multiple occasions of, of the year, and I know that's a big concern of this board. But we do not require a variance for that, and I think that really speaks to, um, you know, an application that is not overdoing it, so to speak, uh, with the proposed development of this lot. So I think that really goes to, you know, the heart of the negative criteria, that we're not creating, or we're not proposing uh, subdivision or, or, you know, two separate dwellings that are going to create a condition that would have a negative impact, um, on the neighbors. You know, the applicant, as you heard from the first hearing to, to, you know, to now, has made substantial efforts to improve this site. Um, we, we, we've, you know, made efforts, we've gone back to the drawing board and, and we've made efforts to either, uh, reduce variances or, uh, you know, remove them altogether. Um, and I think we're really proposing a plan here that's going to mesh well with the character of the area. I'm not going to reiterate all the testimony from the engineer or the architect, uh, but I think their, their, you know, testimony was very clear that what's proposed, you know, will be an asset to the neighborhood and the township as well. And, and lastly, uh, whether or not there's going to be a negative impairment to the intent and the purpose of the zone plan, the zoning ordinance, the purpose of the township zoning ordinance, uh, meshes or, um, you, you know, propels the same purposes of the MLUL, um, and there are at least two criteria here of the MLUL that are advanced, so I would say that, um, you know, there's no impair, um, you know, to the, to the zoning ordinance, and lastly, we are proposing to permit it uses this evening. Um, so we're not in any way going to fracture, um, the intent of the zone plan of the zone as well. All in all, uh, I think, I think my testimony has, has made it clear that in my professional opinion, um, we're dealing with, uh, C1 hardships, uh, and also in terms of the C2, uh, the benefits do outweigh the detriments, and if there are any detriments, they're not, um, substantial in nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lavender?
I think that's the extent of our witnesses this evening. The board has any questions for myself or any of the witnesses, or we could, with, uh, your permission, open it to the public?
Board members, do you have any questions of this witness?
Oh, just one comment, if I could, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
I mean, I respectfully disagree that there's a C1 hardship here. Um, if this applicant was coming in to do something with the existing home and they were, um, they, they had a hardship because of the front yard setback, I'd agree, but they're subdividing this lot. So, I mean, there is case law talking about the, I mean, the Raspberry decision talked about subdivisions and, and had to do with D2 use variance, uh, but the, the spirit was, if you subdivide a lot, you're kind of exacerbating the existing, uh, non-conforming conditions, so at that point, I don't think there's a C1, it's, it's almost like a, um, self-created hardship. Um, I would just defer that, you know, the applicant has provided, uh, um, testimony about the C2. Um, if you, if you wish to, uh, consider that and, and weigh it, I, I think, you know, he has provided, uh, clarity on that, but I, uh, just respectfully disagree on the C1. And, uh, basically, just, I always put the footnote in there about C2s. Uh, and I'll, you know, the, if the planner wants to offer this, it says that the focus on the C2 shall be on the characteristics of the land that presented opportunity for improved zoning and planning that will benefit the community. I think he's kind of addressed it, if he wants to provide anything more, I, I'd offer him that floor, but, you know, I'll defer to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Members of the board, any other questions or comments? Um, okay, I'm going to open it to the public, does anyone in the public wish, have any questions?
Yes, so if I may, may.
Oh, you want to respond? Okay, sure.
Yes, please, yeah, um, uh, thank you for that comment, um, I, I, you know, would say in, you know, terms of the, the C2 criteria here, um, you know, I do understand your point, uh, about the C1, but, um, you know, respectfully, I, I, I would say I, you know, do understand, uh, you know, the point of, you know, having an extra house in this lot, but I would say that, you know, having, having these kind of double triangles in itself, the, the overall lot in itself, uh, I would say presents a, you know, hardship. Um, in terms of the, the C2 criteria, um, you know, thank you for the opportunity to address this further. Um, I would also add, uh, criteria, uh, M, which speaks to the, uh, the efficient use of land. Um, I think, I think what's proposed this evening, uh, where we have, um, a lot, which obviously has the two dr- two, two, two double, double triangles, the one portion, the larger portion of the triangle, which is undeveloped. Um, I would say what's proposed is actually more efficient in terms of, if you look at the, um, the, the, um, the parcel map and then the lots in the area, this is really filling in a hole of the neighborhood, and it, it's creating a, a condition which I would say is actually more consistent, uh, with the, you know, layout of the area as well. Um, you know, so I do think from a C2 standpoint, what's proposed is actually creating a condition, um, that is, is more so conditioned with the fabric of the community, despite the fact, of course, that we do need the variances, but but I think these variances are all justified, um, you know, through the points I made in my testimony. Thank you for that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Members of the board, comments, questions? Okay, uh, let's open it up to the public at this time. Members of the public, do you have any comments or questions, uh, of this witness? Or about this application? Would you indicate by showing her hand, waving your hand, that you want to have a question?
No, I'm Madam Chair.
Thank you, close to the public. Right, members of the board, what is your pleasure? Comments, thoughts? Or you can make a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill, I mean, I think based upon the fact that the applicant has, uh, come back and, uh, complied with all of the comments from the staff and addressed the issues of, um, sort of the intense size of, um, the addition, I, I mean, I would put a motion forward, um, that this board take a vote tonight, um, and I'm of the mind to approve, but obviously that would be up to everyone else to decide, but I'd make the motion to approve it.
Obviously, subject to all the conditions they agreed to on the record and the staff reports, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that was my intent by saying they made all the adjustments, they came back. Um, um, Ms. Corcoran noted that the staff had no further comments because the applicant had agreed to, um, make the changes that had been suggested by the staff to make it not such an intensive, um, sort of use there or land usage, so yes, with, with all of the compliances, everything that was agreed to.
We need a second.
Yes, we need a second, um, what about the mayor's concern about, um, assuring that, uh, there would be no, oh, no, that was the other application. I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, this is Dawn Corcoran, I agree with Councilwoman Cahill, there have been substantial, um, changes to the plan. At this point, they've agreed to basically everything, all of the concerns, they agreed to all of the reports, so I would be comfortable making the second.
Okay, thank you, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Appreciate it. Night, everyone.
Have a good night, thank you.
Reminder that the meeting starts at 7 o'clock in case anyone may not remember.
Is that directed towards me, Madam Chairman?
But there might be someone listening for us.
My staff is going to get it tomorrow. Thank you all, take care.
Have a good night.
All right. We're journeying, okay, good.